Hello, everyone. My name is Lavender Whitaker, and I'm here to open our Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. I will open the meeting and call it to order. And is there an approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
A second.
It's been moved in seconds. Sarah, your preference, preferential vote or vote? I don't know why I said that.
Yay.
Eri?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President Kuzia?
Yes.
And I will vote yes for vote five to zero. Are there any public comments? With that, we will recess to close session and return at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board Meeting. We will reconvene to open session. We did not take any action in closed session, so everyone is aware. We will move to item three C. Not taking action on any closed items, so Vice President Kuziac, would you please read us our mission statement?
Yes, President Whitaker. "We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents."
Thank you, Vice President Kuziac. Also going to share our public comment instructions so that everyone here and online knows how to speak if they would like to. "The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board Agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request-to-speak form, which are in the back in blue, or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of that agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted or asked to sit down. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take action on the items presented." And lucky us, tonight, we get to have our Jensen Ranch community with us. Parveen.
Welcome, Jensen Ranch. We have our principal, Ms. Lisa McLean, is going to start us off. It's great to have everyone here.
Hopefully, we've got a big virtual audience tonight. Good evening, Board. My name is Lisa McLean, Principal at Jensen Ranch. And tonight's presentation, "Rebuilding Social and Emotional Resilience Post-Pandemic", highlights the important and necessary work we've done to engage in this year to support both our students and our staff. "We prepared for this school year with a goal of focusing and reflecting on our practices to strengthen our professional relationships. We decided to incorporate the principles of the community of practice, where a group of people who share a concern or a passion for something they do work together to learn how to do it better. And this is exactly what our Jensen team has been working on. We are focused on establishing and maintaining a level of trust and improving our communication with one another so our staff can be more effective as a collaborative and professional learning team. Being a strong cohesive team ensures we can support our students. Our students continue to need targeted social and emotional support through daily SEL lessons and activities, where we focus on building resiliency and utilizing restorative practices. Tonight, we will share how trust and improved communication supports a stronger, more positive school community. We will share about our staff, building through the community of practice. Kindergarten and first grades will share about daily positive affirmations. Second grade will share about the power of yet, and our fourth and fifth grades will share their restorative practices.
I'm here with Nancy Galloway and Kelly Farquhar. And last year, we participated in a district working group in practicing restorative practices and social-emotional learning and community circles. And in doing so, we took a task back to our site to work together with our administrator to help build our adult resiliency post-pandemic at Jensen Ranch. We have created an environment, starting with some great activities, where we can work together as a staff and build our capacity for challenging tasks through building communication and trust.
As a team, we came up with some activities to build strong trust and communication. Some activities were just to have some fun and be kind of silly with one another. Some were to help us build that strong foundation that Shauna just mentioned. We got deeper with some of our activities. We helped some community circles. And it was just great for building our team as a stronger community.
Really glad that we got a chance to do this because we do think it's making a difference among our staff. We've gotten really good feedback. And I think it's given some of us the opportunity to start to have those courageous conversations that are really needed to facilitate change and growth among the staff members.
I get better every single day. Mistakes are part of learning. I am a good sport. And I can do hard things.
Affirmations are so important because they help to change any negativity into positivity. They boost self-esteem and self-worth. They help my students find comfort in knowing that they can be magical and grouchy, musical and super. It helps to build their self-esteem, help them to believe in themselves, help them to know that they have the power to do great things and be great, and that they can do hard things, and that every day they get stronger.
Perseverance. Say grit. Boys and girls, these are not just things that I'm teaching because I want you to do it. Growth mindset, each and every single day means knowing that your brain has the ability to stretch and change and grow. We learn from our failures, our mistakes. That's what helps our brains stretch and grow.
In second grade, we finished up our SEL unit on growth mindset versus fixed mindset with the idea of the power of yet. And we asked our second graders to really think deep inside, what kinds of things are they not good at right now? But if they keep practicing and trying and persevering, they will get there. They're just not there yet. Our second graders totally connected to and grasped onto the idea of the power of yet, so much so that I got emails from families. So not only were they using the idea of the power of yet in the classroom and out on the playground, but at home too. If you were to be inside of my second grade classroom, even two months after the lesson, you will hear words from my kids such as, "I am not using transition words in my writing yet", or "I am not good at subtracting multiple numbers yet". Our second graders totally get it. They understand growth mindset versus fixed mindset, and the power of yet is something that we will implement every year moving forward.
My name is Huxley. I'm in second grade. And I'm here to teach you about the power of yet. Now, you may be wondering what beautiful artwork is behind me. It's yet art. Girls' mindset will say something like, "I can't do this yet." That's what this is here for. And a fixed mindset is somebody who will say, "I can't do this", or "I'll never be able to do this", or "I quit". A fixed mindset will say something like that. A growth mindset will say something like, "I can't do this yet", which is why we made this art. As you can see, Navica is not very good at piano. She isn't that good at tennis yet either. Education, she still needs practicing one time. For technology, coding is kind of hard for her, but she'll eventually get it. But building robots is kind of hard for her and tight. The power of yet is basically saying, if somebody says, "I can't do this", you can correct them and say, "I can't do this yet." You can't. They can because they can do it, but they might not be able to do it yet. Power of yet also helps to stretch your brain because your brain is basically fantastic, elastic.
Sean, is that okay if I play with you?
No, of course not. Why?
Because you were being mean to me yesterday.
But remember what the school taught? You have to talk things out.
Well, you really made me upset yesterday.
I'm sorry, Sean. I was aggressive when I seen around with you.
It's okay. You can play with me. Thanks.
So why is it important to be able to talk things out when you have a problem with somebody?
I think it's important to talk things out when you argue with somebody because it might get like really heated up with them, and you might end up getting physical, which you don't want to happen. And it's just a good thing to be able to talk out a problem with people because it's like a life skill.
The reason why you have to talk things out is so that you don't like get hurt because you might fight and something bad could happen.
At Jensen Ranch, we're learning about getting along and how to solve problems. If someone says sorry to you, they might not mean it. If they could say sorry to you to just get out of trouble, but you never know what's going on inside, and you don't know what they're thinking, and if they really mean it or not.
Yeah, sometimes when you and your friends get into like fights because like let's say that they've been mean to each other, I like to think of it like they're entering a maze. It's like they're stuck in the maze, and they aren't ready yet like to fix the problem. And once you guys, like the people that got in a fight tried to fix it like by saying, "I'm sorry" or knowing where they made a mistake, it's like when they're finding the way to get out of the maze. So I think it's better when like you try to fix the problem yourself before going to adults. So that way you'll feel like better, and you guys can learn how to recover mistakes.
How do you think you can use these skills when you're no longer at Jensen?
You're going to need to solve problems on your own because if nobody's going to be there to help you, you'll need to learn how to do it yourself and be a little bit more independent.
I agree with her because like she said, once you leave Jensen and let's say you're already a future learner, learn how to be responsible of the situation you're in. It helps you and helps everyone.
We're going to do it all again.
And that concludes our presentation for this evening. I am not on the mic. So I will repeat myself for those of you online so you could hear me. We're going to have a couple of recognitions before we learn which staff and folks are here representing the school community. And then we'll hear from some board comments, and then we'll go from there.
Sweet. I'd like to invite Serena Yuiya up here. Come on up. Give her a hand.
And just before we get started, whoever has cameras, you can come up here. You can come behind us. Feel free to welcome to get the room to get the best pick possible.
Absolutely. The Governance Team, along with Jensen Ranch Elementary School, are proud to honor Serena Yuiya. Serena exemplifies what it means to be a Jensen Jaguar. Throughout her six years at Jensen Ranch, Serena is known by the staff as someone who is caring, friendly, and motivated. She also consistently gives her personal best in all areas. Serena is positive and consistently goes out of her way to support and make her classmates feel special and valued, and will even let an adult know when she is worried about one of her friends. When there are new students, Serena enjoys showing them around campus to help make them feel at home. In class, Serena is an active participant in discussions, asks questions, and takes time with her assignments to do her best work. Serena's favorite subjects are music, writing, PE, and science. She also enjoys learning music and plans to play numerous instruments. In her free time, Serena enjoys hanging out with her friends, playing video games, and reading. When she was in third grade, Serena came up with the idea to start a school newspaper. By the start of fourth grade, she was able to launch the Jaguar Gazette bi-monthly student newsletter and serves as the editor while recruiting other students to write articles. She demonstrates leadership by following up with her writers and meets with Ms. McLean to edit and publish the paper so that all students receive a copy. Serena wants to be an author when she grows up because she loves to paint a scene with her words and enjoys making up stories for others to read. She also wants to be a journalist because she loves reporting and writing in newspapers. The Governance Team joins Jensen Ranch Elementary School in honoring Serena Yuiya as an outstanding student.
Serena, we would love to hear who's here representing you tonight and came to support you. If you want to go on the mic and let us know who's here, we'd love that.
Hi, my name is Serena Yahya. And the people that came with me today are my mom. It's right there. She was the one taking tons of photos. And my dad, that's all the way over there in the back, and my brother wearing the big puffy yellow jacket. Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats. Trustee Adams.
Okay, if I could have Heather Glenn up here. The Governance Team, along with Jensen Ranch Elementary, are proud to recognize Heather Glenn as Jensen Ranch Elementary School's outstanding volunteer of the 22-23 school year. Heather has been actively involved in the Jensen community for the past seven years and still has one more year to go. She is kind, caring, and has a wonderful sense of humor. Heather has taken on the coordinator role for many PTA programs at Jensen and has a positive can-do attitude about every event and activity she is involved in. Heather has supported the Jensen community in so many ways. She served on the PTA Board for two years, chaired the family dance, supported the Battle of the Books, the book fairs and movie nights, organized the PTA restaurant fundraisers, served as a classroom volunteer and chaperone, assisted at walk-through registrations, supported the talent show, end-of-the-year play day, and volunteered with the Jensen Arts and Music Program Jam. However, chairing the Walkathon is Heather's favorite program, not only because it helps to raise money for Jensen Ranch, but most importantly because it is an event where the whole school community comes together to have fun. We cannot thank Heather enough for her time, dedication, and commitment to Jensen Ranch. She is an invaluable member of our school community. The Governance Team and Jensen Ranch are extremely grateful for the support Heather has given to the Jensen Ranch community and is proud to honor Heather Glenn as an outstanding volunteer.
Heather, would you like to share with us who's supporting you tonight?
I feel like all of you do, honestly, but my family. My husband and my son is a sixth grader at Creekside this year. And then my daughter is in fourth grade at Jensen, so thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Do we have board comments? Quentin?
Just want to say real quick that it's so great you're making these lessons for these students and making them in a fun way that includes games and activities. Looks like a lot of fun. And also that I feel like some of the high schoolers would benefit from learning about the power of yet and talking things through. So it's great to see that you're teaching these students at an early age because it's something you'll use throughout your educational life and life beyond. So thanks. Looks great.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I, just to dovetail on Quentin's comment, I never heard the idea of the power of yet before tonight, and I love that idea. It just so, you know, 49 years old, I learned something tonight about my own growth mindset. And I just, these kids are very lucky to be learning that and to be able to so eloquently share what it means to them at that age. It just, I have a lot of hope for our future right now, so it's really beautiful to see. And I also want to say to Serena, journalists, we need them. So go for it. That's wonderful work. Thank you.
Eri?
Well, I think the attention to the social and emotional health, especially after a pandemic, is so important right now for everybody, actually. And the things that you talked about there about building trust and teams and so forth is really great. It looks like a lot of fun up there, actually, which is also important to be able to do that. And I also was impressed by the idea of being able to do hard things. And that little boy describing yet is really the highlight of that little video. So he was amazing in there, as were all the kids in there. So yeah, thanks for a great report, and congratulations to Serena and Heather. Thank you.
Dolly?
Yes. I also liked the part about the mistakes are part of learning. It's something I didn't really get back, you know, when I was young and a kid in school. It was like you had to try very hard not to ever make mistakes because some big red pen would go there, and you couldn't like restore them. It's not like if you learned it later, it was okay. So this new way of doing, you know, like we're looking at grading practices and stuff about how, you know, if you can fix it, sort of fits all into this also social-emotional learning for kids. So I really like that. Helps them believe in themselves, tells them that they can do hard things, building self-esteem, which is so important. That growth mindset, the power of yet. "I'm not good at it right now yet." Yeah, I love the little like hesitation you have, and then it makes it so much more positive. I know I would have many parents tell me all the time, "I'm not good at math", right while I'm teaching their kids math. I think, you know, it would be so nice to tell that parent, "Oh, you're not good at math yet. You can be", you know? The fantastic elastic of our brain, that was really cute, about talking things out, and the two boys at the court playing, that was really neat to see them do that. And to Serena, yeah, keep motivated, keep caring for your friends, and love your music and writing and journalism. How wonderful. Yes, we do need plenty of people to be good writers. Thank you, and thank you to Heather also.
Vice President Kuziac?
Thanks. When I come and visit Jensen Ranch, I hope to meet Huxley because he could be like a motivational speaker. And I think it's really this cascading reflection on yet up here tonight. It's very powerful, and I just think about what it's been, what it was like in the early days of the pandemic. And if that tool had been more present in my life to sort of get through that. I just want to say thank you to Heather. And being a volunteer in an elementary school is such a special privilege. With both my kids in middle school now, I really miss it. And so thank you for all you've done for the Jensen Ranch community. And Serena, journalism really speaks to me. I was a student journalist myself, both in high school and in college. And to this day, I still schlepp around this granite plaque I received as a senior in high school from the Virginian Pilot for having the first-place editorial about a certain school policy that I didn't like in the Norfolk, Virginia area. That's over near Washington, DC. So we need journalists. We need people telling the story of the vulnerable in our community. And so I hope you continue doing that and hold it in your heart. Thanks so much for doing that.
Superintendent Amari?
Yeah, I look at the staff here, and I think about what I observe when I visit, like the social-emotional lessons and all of the things you guys are doing to really... like the social emotional lessons and all of the things you guys are doing to really in PE, in classrooms, all the time. We have the teacher of the year here as well. But, you know, and, and Ms. McLean for building that team and really strengthening the professional learning community, which is so important in supporting students. And she's so techie, everything she does is like, it's awesome. I actually met Huxley and loved, and what you saw is exactly who he is. He was great explaining it, but all of the things that you're doing, this whole power of yet, the growth mindset is if anybody is interested, if you read Carol Dweck's book about growth mindset, it's an amazing book. That's really where all of this kind of started. And it's so important even as adults for us. I think you're empowering kids by doing that. Serena, you're awesome. We need journalists that, especially with what's going on in the world right now, we need journalists like you who are going to really share the truth with the community and the world. And I loved how you said your last name, Yahya. And just really glad. And of course, Ms., you know, Heather with doing so many things, I don't even know how she does it because you listed just, that was just half, probably one-third of what she does. So thank you again. I'm sure they're thrilled that you're there one more year. But I also want to say Serena, the journalist, journalism class at the high school would love to have you. So thank you so much. Great presentation.
And I'm the last person, so everybody said so many great things and I don't want to duplicate everything that's said, but I do want to thank the community for coming out tonight, sharing about your school and what you're doing. One thing that I really, really appreciate is what you're doing for teachers and the, the team building. You're creating the community yourselves and leading by example. So I just really appreciate it because we all have gone through a lot. Like Gary said, and you know, our teachers matter too, and the health of being able to have those courageous conversations, you said. Like, we need to create that trust and safety in ourselves so that we can create psychological safety for our kids. So I really want to thank you for all of that. Serena, I can't wait to hear your music because I know you'll be in all of our music programs moving forward and read your future stories. And Heather, thank you so much for contributing to our community. We really need parents. You help us run our schools and it's evident that you dedicate a lot of your time. And I know your kids, even if they don't say it, probably really appreciate their mom supporting them. And Principal McLean, would you like to introduce your staff?
Sure. So actually, we have a, a strong and mighty group of one tonight of my staff. So I, I have Nancy Galloway, who is Castro Valley's Teacher of the Year.
Then I would love to raise a hand, parents. Woo, thank you for coming and supporting. And then what I, like, friends of teachers, community members, kids of teachers. Okay.
We have a former parent and, and, yes, we've got, we've got people here. And we've got a lot of people online. They just didn't want to brave the roads tonight.
Thank you all.
Everybody, all of them for coming. And I just want to, because names are very important, so I just want to acknowledge Serena. She is, yeah, she's amazing and she's not going to correct anybody, but she will actually, but, but it is Serena. So yeah, she, she will be a force to be reckoned with in journalism world out there. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have our student board member report. Quentin?
Yeah, give me one second. There it is. Okay. So it's pretty short. We had a winter break, so not much to report on. But around the district, students went on winter break and I'm sure enjoyed it very much. I can say from personal experience, the break was nice. The adult school is again offering their popular course, Anxious Kids and Teens: Exploring the Problem and Developing Strategies for Coping. The program aims to give parents the tools and resources to guide their students through our anxious times. January at CVE is Develop Friendships Month, encouraging parents to talk to their students about developing friendships with someone new, someone who may be different from them, but who shares similar interests, hobbies, or senses of humor. And for the month of January, their behavioral theme is Gentle January. And they're focusing on being gentle with their words, for example, expressing ourselves in kind ways, taking a deep breath before speaking, and our bodies, for example, keeping our hands and feet to ourselves. So good messages over there. At CVHS, students took their finals the week before break. And winter ball planning is also underway. This year's dance will feature a DJ, dance cubes, donuts, a coffee bar, karaoke, and a snow machine. So a lot of fun in the future. That's all I got. Thanks.
Can you put your mic on, Michael, please?
What's a dance cube?
It's a cube where students can stand on it and dance on it. It's, it's kind of, I don't know. I mean, it was very popular last year, so, you know.
Thank you, Quentin. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple of things. I want to remind everyone that on Monday, January sixteenth, we have a Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at the CFA at ten to twelve PM. I hope everyone comes. It's going to be a wonderful celebration. I also wanted to thank our team for preparing because of the storm during the break. They worked really hard. The maintenance operations department checked every room. Everybody was here. We met as a cabinet to make sure that we're ready for whatever comes next. And of course, we had to close one of our schools just for one day and then we opened it. I want to thank everybody at Palomar's as well. And we will send that flyer for the parent workshops. I highly encourage people to kind of take a look at that. We'll send it out and, and in school newsletters as well as ourselves posting it. I do want to share something district-wide that I think a lot of times we may not know, and that's the number of grants that we apply for and receive. And I'm just going to read through some of them. For example, and I'm going to mention like the people who actually write these grants. We do have a grant writer we work with who just helps us like with, you need this and this to include or the timelines and things, but basically our staff works really hard to write them. For example, just recently, we had the Dual Immersion Grant that Ms. Mia Rashichi wrote for $350,000. Another one for Transitional Kindergarten that she wrote for $190,000. California Department of Public Health for testing and all of those things that Suzie Chan wrote for $434,000. Bear with me, got a few. And this is not even all of them. California Department of Ed Anti-Bias Education Grant that again, Ms. Mia Rashichi wrote for another $200,000. And I'm skipping over some smaller ones. Child Nutrition Supply for $214,000. K-12 Strong Workforce Program, Vivian Perator, who left us and retired this year, wrote for $1.1 million. Another one, Sutter Hospital has always been very gracious and we write grants for the Wellness Center for $75,000. Teacher Residency Capacity Grant, that Dr. Zamora wrote for $192,000. There was also another grant that we wrote for Local Solutions Grant Program that Sherri Beats had actually applied for. Community School Grant for $500,000. Jason had helped with that. So a lot from each of the divisions. And then there are some facility grants, for example, a CTE Prop 51 Grant for 1.7 million. Another one for Culinary Academy to expand it at the high school for $2.4 million. So altogether, when you look, it's $8 million in just two years that we have received. I just wanted to mention that sometimes people ask like, are you asking for grants for, you know, we, we have a lot of smaller ones, but these were just some of the ones that I wanted to mention and thank people who worked so hard to write them and receive them. So that's my report tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Amadi. And for those of you who would like to go home and eat something, take a shower, you know, do some homework, you know, whatever you want to do, we're going to take a five-minute break. So we've got a lot of interesting topics after though. So if you want to join us, we'll be back at, I'm going to say six forty-five, just to give us a, but, but we have to be back at six forty-five. Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone, and welcome back from the break. Do we have any CSC representation on tonight? How about CVTA? All right, well, we'll move on to item nine, public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment? Great, thank you so much, Amy. I will move on to the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes six zero. We'll move on to item eleven, reports, discussions, and action items. And we are really lucky and and so excited to see this presentation tonight of all the great work that's happening with the Mosaic Project. I'll hand it over to you, Superintendent Amadi, to make the introduction.
Thank you so much. We are very excited to have this presentation. So I'm going to ask Laura Mandell, Ms. Laura Mandell is the Executive Director of the Mosaic Project, whom we have worked with for quite a few years already, and Ms. Rashichi is going to come up as well. We're going to start with, with you, starting us off about what Mosaic Project actually is, and then go from there.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me, everybody. Who are we? We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Right now, we're based in Oakland and we have been around since 2000. We're entering our twenty-third year. And at this point, we have served over eighty-four thousand individuals through our experiential education programs. Most of those are children, but not all. We also do a lot of professional development and we also do some organization trainings as a way to raise money for our children's and youth programs as well. We are an experiential education organization primarily. We focus on social emotional learning. And today, one of my colleagues said that what we do is we humanize people. And I think that isn't really always the language we use, but that's really what it is. We're overcoming prejudice, we're overcoming stereotyping, we're overcoming discrimination. And we are working against that tendency that is happening so much more and more to other people. And we are looking at breaking through that and really humanizing people so we can empathize with one another, so we can connect one another. We have a whole, and you'll see that in some of our materials, a whole model around the pyramid of violence and the pyramid of peace. And we start from this idea that what leads to misunderstanding and prejudice discrimination and then violence is the disconnection. It is when we don't know people different from us, we don't interact with people different from us. We don't really empathize, we don't really talk to one another. And then that can lead to so much misunderstanding and fear and ignorance and hate and violence. So we're working to dismantle that pyramid of violence and we're transforming it into a pyramid of peace, starting with just connecting people. And that might be bringing people together who otherwise wouldn't know each other. It also might be just connecting people who do know each other, but helping them get to know each other even better to understand each other at a deeper level. We break down the word respect to re again, spec to look, look again. That if we're truly respecting somebody, we're looking again, we're connecting again, and we're trying to really understand them. And that can help us overcome all sorts of differences, overcome conflicts and connect across differences. So how do we do this? It's hard to explain when we do something with experiential education because the whole idea is that embodying those lessons. And so instead of tell you about it, I'm going to show it to you. I, we have a five minute video that highlights our primary program, which is our outdoor project. And that's where we bring students from very different backgrounds together in a camp setting for a whole school week so they can really delve in to these lessons. So when you see that, it'll give you a sense of all of our curriculum and everything we do. And I think we have that ready to go, yeah?
So after we watch the video, then we're going to talk about what we do together, our collaboration. And then we can ask, you know, if you have questions and comments.
Here we are, many years after Brown versus Board of Education. And yet, our schools and our communities are just as segregated as ever. You have schools that are physically so close to each other and yet worlds, worlds apart. Our children are growing up with little or no exposure to people different from themselves. This separation leads to fear and prejudice, discrimination, and violence. And the cycle just continues. It isn't hopeless. There is something we can do, and it's pretty simple. We know that when people actually meet people, know people who are different from them, we can break through those misunderstandings. This is what inspired me to create Mosaic Project. The Mosaic Project breaks the cycle by reaching students before negative attitudes about difference become entrenched. Our principal program is our outdoor school. In each session, we bring together approximately 90 4th and 5th graders from very different schools, very different communities. We provide fun, immersive, experiential programs that address issues of difference, empathy, and conflict resolution.
I learned about being assertive. You, it's strong without being mean. You should stand up for yourself instead of being passive.
Jump!
No, I will not jump. The reason why I like Mosaic is it teaches you how to have mutual respect, self-respect, how to be open-minded, how to get to know people better.
Students participate all together in large group sessions by the campfire. And then they split off into smaller groups where they practice their skills and tools through game activities.
I'm going to lay down.
Lay down. And my favorite thing to dream about while I'm laying is this.
The Mosaic Project is so much more than anti-bullying or social emotional learning. It's both of those things. But it also puts everything into the context of these social systems that we're all a part of.
Prejudice is a judgment made about someone without knowing the person.
We intentionally bring together a group of diverse adults, usually more diverse than the students have ever seen, all working together and who clearly love one another and have a really good time together. And this is essential to what we do.
I just, I love bringing out whatever they're hiding inside of them and just having them open up and blossom like I did while I was here.
What I love about Mosaic is that it's one of those places where you can be your total self. And there's not many places like that.
I was very shy at first. I wasn't talking that much till my cabin leader Juan. He told me some of his backstory, told him some of mine. He made me feel very comfortable at Mosaic and like he opened me up. I want to give other kids the opportunity that Juan has given me.
The changes that we see in the students and the youth leaders in just one week are incredible.
I came from a place of a lot of privilege. Getting to know people from different backgrounds did change my life in many different ways. Coming back as a youth leader, I feel like I'm doing the action that I wanted to do when I was in 4th grade. I've seen students become more empathetic for one another and be able to talk to each other.
I see barriers breaking down every day. There's just something about this place that does that.
I used to not want to be friends with people who were a lot different than me, but now I have a lot of friends who are different than me. I met a friend named Alonso. One of my other friends is Theo. Alonso and Theo are both in my cabin. They're nice people. They're good friends.
I learned a lot of things and everybody has been so kind to me. I think I'll come back when I'm 15 as a cabin leader. I want to teach other kids the way of Mosaic.
Every now and then, I watch interactions between children from drastically different backgrounds, actually talking to one another, actually empathizing, actually hearing each other's stories. And it will really hit me like, wow, nowhere else but here. Would they even be sitting anywhere near each other, let alone talking? And that's how we're going to change the world. So that's a little window into our primary program, the outdoor project. And then, as you can see, the youth theaters there, we have a whole youth theater curriculum, a year-round program for the high school students and the younger students become the high schools, the youth theaters. But we also recruit from other places too. And we've had at least 10 Castro Valley High School students join us in the past few years, which has been amazing. And then the teachers are there too and get professional development. And then we continue to work in the schools and with the teachers. And we have partnerships with all sorts of schools and districts. And that's where I will turn it over to me.
Thank you, Laura. So Ed Services, we, I should say, good evening, board members. Good evening, cabinet members and stakeholders in the audience. We, Ed Services, the department does professional development all the time. And part of our work is to really make sure that we're responding to the needs of our teachers and principals. And so the professional development that we always want to do is to make sure that it's aligned to our three areas of focus, which is always and continues to be multi-tiered systems of support, equity, and building capacity. That's what we're all about. And so in this particular year, when we started our partnership with Mosaic Project, our teachers had really, teachers and principals had asked for some support, some additional support to build their skill and capacity and knowledge around how to have deeper work in the areas of being anti-bias and being anti-racist. And so that's work that we were asking them to do in their both classrooms and in the, in the school and in the district. And so, of course, we wanted to respond to that request. So we found a partner in Mosaic Project. And on the screen, you see the different four sessions that really kind of lay out the topics that we were talking about. And all of our elementary teachers and principals went through the sessions. All of our middle school went through the sessions and our high schools did a couple of sessions a little bit differently. They were in kind of in a different place and needed something different. So what do we do? We want to respond to what their needs are and meet them where they are. So that was the professional development. But in the big picture of things, what we were, there were four things that we were kind of out to do. One of those was continuing to build a common vocabulary around words like implicit bias, prejudice, stereotyping, discrimination. We need to make sure that we are, we have the same definitions so that we're working from the same place when we have challenging conversations. So that was one arena. And then two, we really did want to learn some new strategies around communication, assertiveness, deeper listening, because sometimes people think they're listening, but they're not really listening. And so it's a practice skill to get better and better at that. So that was number two. Number three was building new knowledge. Laura mentioned pyramids of peace and pyramids of violence. Like, what is that? And what does that, what does that really mean? And so that was new knowledge for us as, as a district. And then last but not least, the last, that section where it says, like, make sure we practice, hands-on practice. Folks want to make sure that we had lots and lots and lots of opportunities to practice challenging scenarios so that when they come up, we've done practice of issue of racism comes up. If an issue of prejudice comes up, if an issue of implicit bias comes up, if an issue of privilege comes up, that we've practiced, like, if that happens at our school, if that happens in my classroom, what do we say? What do we do? And we're not looking for perfection. We're not looking, you know, for practice to get to perfection. We're looking for a practice to enhance our capacity, to build our skill, to have those conversations, to have those challenging conversations in a way that on the other side of that conversation, we end up in a productive place where we can still work together and boogie down and make sure that we are serving our students well. So that, those are kind of like the four things that we were out to do around the professional development. And those sessions really matter to our, to our educators. So that was the professional development that we participated in. And then tools, tools that our educators can use. Mosaic has been an amazing partner in being responsive to our educators said, we need this. How can you help us to kind of build this? So the one thing I'll mention, and we, we have a hard copy for you, and it's a link in the slides as well, is this Action Guide for Families. They also have an Action Guide for Businesses. But the Action Guide for Families, really all of that professional development that we went through, you know, sometimes people forget, you know, here at once, here at twice, here at three times. And like, oh, my gosh, what was it? But, you know, I don't remember. What, what, what was that definition that we said, you know, we were going to work on and have in common about prejudice or discrimination or implicit bias? And we can go to a source, have it at our fingertips and like remind ourselves and refresh ourselves around those definitions. Or when we talk about subtle acts of exclusion and some people say microaggressions. Oh, some of those aggressions aren't so micro. So, you know, how do we work through those and what are we really defining? And then another one, I think we heard the students say, you know, assertive. What's the definition of that? Like, we have that, the kid, he said it so well, you know, strong without being mean. That's really powerful coming from the young people in our world. So again, the Action Guide is just a powerful tool to refresh what we had professional development on. And Mosaic does a men, you know, just a fantastic job of putting in more and more tools into one place where teachers can find it easily and refresh around the knowledge that they built. So that's one of the, one of the tools that we use. Then our teachers were working on, I mean, you know what? It would be really nice to have a cheat sheet one-pager around when we're facilitating challenging conversations. I'd like to refer to it or I'd have it pinned up on my wall. And so, you know, Mosaic Project, could you work with us on that? Of course, they're like, yeah, of course. And so our teachers and Mosaic Project staff work together. And you have the link to the one-pager there about facilitating challenging conversations. And then the last, our elementary teachers are always looking at enhancing their practice, their skill, their language when they're filling out the report card. Because the report cards can be a tricky thing and getting the right language down. So when I'm communicating with parents, they get it and we can continue to partner together in the best interest of our students. That's powerful. And we all need help around that to get better and better at it. So we asked, you know, we talked to Mosaic Project again and said, hey, you know, we want to, we want to work on a tool. One pager, simple, keep it simple, but something that we can use over and over and over again every year. And so can you work on with that with us? Yes, we can. And so those are three of the tools, tools for our educators to use over and over and, you know, on a recurring year that we can refer back to and continue to enhance our practice. So just some, some examples of the tools that we use. So I think I am handing this back off to Superintendent Amadi.
Yeah, I just wanted to share a couple of things also that Mosaic Project did for parenting classes that were amazing. Again, you know, when we saw a need, we would reach out to Laura and her team, and they just did a wonderful job. So we had these last year. You know, and as you could see, there, there were like several sessions for parenting for peace. And then they did one parenting for connection, skills for supporting our kids in challenging times. We knew that kids were going through a lot and they continue to go through a lot. So that's just, so the, the parent workshops were really effective. And I think continuing that kind of work would be really great. Next slide, just wanted to say a couple of other things. So as you heard, our high school students can actually be, not only have the training and go through the process, but can be camp counselors. And we've had several who've been camp counselors and they absolutely love it. The other piece that is available to us are school assemblies and presentations. It's really nice to reinforce some of the things that we've talked about at assemblies and presentations. And of course, you know, when you think about having that kind of outdoor camp. And I think there was a statement made about you want to get to kids before they, as they're forming their habits, right? 4th and 5th grade graders, it's a really critical age. And just imagine having that in our backyard so that we can, our kids, not only our students, but students in the entire area here. It's one thing to have it like three hours away versus right here in our backyard. So we're, you know, hopefully we can have all of our 4th and 5th graders actually participate and, and learn. One of the things that I've noticed about that, that, you know, just working with Laura and Mosaic Project is once you're a Mosaic Project person, you are it forever, I've noticed. It's not like you don't stop. You don't go to an outdoor camp and come and you're done. That outdoor indoor program, it just changes you. And many of our actually staff and colleagues here have had their kids in the program who live in other communities. I know that Dr. Ryman's kids went through it. Blaine Turp's kids went through it. They lived in Oakland. So it's, it's just really, really great. And you can see the students saying, I want to come back and do this because the students you see as camp counselors were also, many of them were also in, in the, you know, at the outdoor camp. I think one of the things that I really admire about our team is taking opportunities anytime we can to provide professional development. And during COVID, because we had the Wednesdays where we actually had time to do professional development, so that was really great for our teachers. It was like they were there, they got all this professional development. It's just, they have such an immense toolbox that it's easy to just say, hey, we're struggling with this. Do you have something? And they always do. So I just want to thank Laura. I want to thank Mia for working together. They're an amazing team. I think they met for the first time a few days ago. And they're like, oh, that's what you look like. That's right. So anyway, I want to thank you for your, your amazing partnership and we're very lucky to have you and, and continue this journey.
If we could get you on the mic, that'd be great that our audience can hear too.
To say, you know, when you say that you ask us for something and we're like, sure, we have it. And if we don't, we'll make it up. But the thing is, we've made things up in partnership with your team, with Mia and your other principals and teachers. And, you know, we've been doing this now for 23 years. And I've worked with tons of schools and tons of districts. And you are my favorite. Like, I have been, seriously, I've been so inspired. I was part of your, I'm going to get the name wrong, the Social Emotional Learning Committee. And I met with them several times and just the dedication of your teachers and principals and working with us on things and just seeing their passion and how willing, it was during the pandemic it started. And so passionate and willing to work so hard on things. And then, of course, Parveen and Mia, I'm just a big fan. I mean, they're my favorites. So I just, yeah, I have fallen in love with this district and, and so, so excited and happy and grateful to be part of this partnership. And I hope it's just the beginning, just the early years. And as Parveen said, you can't get away. I would say that several of our staff were kids with us and our board president was a youth theater with us. And several of our board members also were youth theaters. Kids aren't quite old enough to be board members yet, but we're getting there. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I want to open it up to the board to ask questions, but I want to ask one that I've been just, you know, you're starting to teach our teachers learning, you know, professional development. And you're partnering with them on things that they're, you know, with a with a growth mindset, like, what, how might we, what can we, what do we need? What are some of the, the best things that you've seen, like, come out of it with our teachers?
Like, your teachers? The guiding questions was amazing. It, it happened, we were in the middle of, of training, we were with all your middle school teachers on January 6. And we were literally in the middle of the workshop, when people started typing in the chat, can we talk about what's going on? I can't focus. And then I was quickly like, what's going on? I didn't know we were in the middle of, you know, it was online, but we were facilitating. And so we pivoted and talked about what's going on. And I, there was a need of people saying, how are we going to talk about this in the classrooms? Like, how are we going to do this? And, and, and the fear too, understandably, of like, what are we going to do? And there's all these different points of views, and we have lots of different people in our community, and how are we going to talk about it? And so that's how that started, like, what's the, what can we do? And then that kind of turned into, we want questions that we can use in any challenging situation, no matter what it is. And I was, wow, thanks for the vote of confidence that you think we can do this. But with your partnership, we did. And, you know, went through a couple, and I brought it back to my team, and people brought it, you brought it back to your team, and we came up with something that really works, and that we shared with other people too. And I use it now, too. So that, I think, is probably my, like, in terms of like, the collaboration, that was probably my favorite thing. And then the other thing is just looking at, we have a whole activity bank of curriculum that we've made available to your teachers too. And with, working with your SCL committee, they already have like a chart of different themes, the way that you already organize it. And so we blended that together, and we have our team put that in there with your team, so that it's like all in this kind of matrix. And I think that was a great outcome, too, that also helped us think about how we can structure it for different districts and different schools.
It's great to see that innovation, but it's also great to hear that the teachers feel safe to speak up. So I want to thank our teachers, continue to speak up. We appreciate it. And to thank you to Mia and Dr. Ryman, like, you're creating that space to allow for that. So that means we're doing something right, creating that psychological safety. So it's just great to hear that that environment is there, and that we're moving down that path together.
If I could just add to what Laura was saying, one of the things that I see is, which is powerful, is when somebody's going into a challenging conversation, and they say, hey, Mia, can we pre-talk? I want to like, practice this with you. And this, that's teachers and, and principals. And they say, you know, first I'm going to, I've had some say, you know, first I'm going to, I'm just going to do the five Cs. It's like, okay, the five Cs, calm, cool, collected, confident, and clear. And, and literally, right? I mean, because it's a calming, you know, it's like, I've got a, I want, I want this conversation to go really well, and I got to get myself in the right place to have that conversation. And so when you see people actually use the tools, and on the other side of that challenging conversation, they come out like, that worked. Like, we had a good conversation, and it was on a challenging topic. That's what we want to happen. Because we still, we need to be able to work together, even if we disagree about some type of topic, or if somebody says something that seems offensive, or their, their bias is coming, and we all have biases. So how do we work through that together, so that we're, we're in partnership in support of our students? Because that's what our work is all about. So I think that's some of the, also the powerful outcomes of the work that we've been doing together.
Thank you. I want to open it up. Sorry, I stole the show. Quentin, and then Sarah, and then Mike?
Yeah, my question might be pretty basic, because I'm not 100% familiar with the relationship between the Mosaic project and the district. But is it mainly just classroom lessons and stuff, or is there some sort of connection to the outdoor school program that you have? Like, is it, is it like the outdoor school that we have at the middle schools, or something different?
So if you're wondering if I want to recruit you to come and be a cabin leader, I do. Yes. So right now, we have our outdoor project, we call it, our camp, and we rent in Felton. We were in Napa for 16 years. Now we're in Felton, where we rent a site. And so that's where the outdoor project is. And so right now, your elementary school, your fourth and fifth graders are not coming to that camp yet. Yet, right? But your youth, we do have you coming as youth theaters. We've had many youth theaters. We had a summer program, and it was 16 kids were selected, and I think it was nine of them were from Castro Valley High, like, more than half. And then we do year-round programming, and then we have special training for them to come and be the cattle leaders, the counselors at the camp. And we've had several Castro Valley High students, around 10, maybe more, come and do that. So there is that connection. However, the hope is that that connection will be stronger and stronger, because we are working on, we have a property on Colcanyan Road, and we are moving through the process with the county right now, in terms of trying to see what we can do there and create it into our own camp. Yeah. So there's, there's the hope that we will be very, very much part of the, the camp and that outdoor program. Thank you.
Sarah?
Thanks. So I just, I, I think the work you're doing is really incredible. And I loved hearing more dimension of it tonight, because I was familiar with a little bit of it going into this tonight, but I didn't realize the extent of professional development work you guys have already done in our district with our teachers and staff. I wanted to ask, like, how many of our teachers have been through this program with you at this point?
So when we did the training, every single elementary teacher, all the middle school teachers, and all of the high school teachers, but the high school teachers went through two kind of different sessions.
Okay, I apologize. You guys did address that. I guess I didn't quite hear it 100%. But I, I, and I, I guess my question is, obviously, this is a lifelong learning issue for everyone, especially adults, you know, who grew up without this kind of, you know, knowledge and consciousness, I guess is the word, is, is the idea that this becomes a continuing thing that people will be revisiting over the years within the district?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we have to. We have to, like, refresh and, and continue to go. And we always have new teachers.
Yes.
And new principals or new assistant principals. So it's a, it's a constant work in progress.
Okay, great. And has it been generally well received?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I'm glad to hear that. I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to attend myself personally. It sounds great. And then with respect to the, the, the camp program, this may be put in cart before the horse, because we're not quite there yet, obviously, and we're not making any decisions tonight. But I'm just curious what sort of fiscal impact that has on the schools that participate? Are, are, is this the kind of thing that we pass on to families?
The way, I can adjust the way that is now in our current model.
Thanks.
So the way we do it, of course, is we're bringing people together from all different backgrounds. That's the point. And so that means we have to make it work for everybody. So we have a sliding scale. We ask everybody to, we ask each school to contribute something. But it's very wide spectrum in terms of, and it's based on the percentage of students. We, the fee for school is based on the percentage of students on free or reduced lunch. Right? And so it is a sliding scale. And we are committed to making it work for any school that is excited, or district that's excited to work with us. We're excited to work with you, and we will work together to make it happen. We work really hard fundraising all year. I know you all work really hard fundraising all year, and we would work together to make, find something that could work.
Okay. Yeah, I've got two more questions. I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Um, with the camp program, when the kids attend, is it just a group from one school at a time, or is it kids from all over? Okay.
From all over. So what we usually do, we have three to four, depending on class size, because there is a limit on what the camp that we're at now can handle, what in the future will handle. So it's usually about 90 students right now, between 80 and 90. And they come usually from three or four schools. And we intentionally mix the schools up, so it's the most diverse mixture, mix of students that we can possibly have. We look at the demographic data of the school. Basically, we look at race, and ethnicity, and culture, and socioeconomic background. Not that those are the only kinds of diversity, there's all sorts of diversity, but we, there's some that we can actually control for looking at the demographics. And there's some that our world has some issues with, right? So we try to get the biggest mix that we can. And then they are, they have time with their teachers every day, and they're with some of their own friends from their own class in their cabins and their learning groups. But they're also with kids from the other, like, we very carefully will make sure that every group is really diverse, so that they have an opportunity to address these social emotional issues and issues around difference in a diverse setting.
Okay, the intentionality of that sounds like it could be very effective.
Yeah. And it's that way around the staff and cabin leaders, too. We're very intentional about making sure that our staff is representative of the diversity of the Bay Area, and our cabin leaders, too. And, you know, what we often talk about with the staff is, we're really proud of our curriculum that's been evolving over all this time. And far more important than what we teach is what we're modeling, that we're modeling this group of adults from all different backgrounds, not only working well together, but clearly having a blast, and really, that it's clear we love each other. And the kids can see that. And we get that feedback as they get older. Some, for some of the younger ones, it's a little hard to articulate that. But as I hear from high school students, it changed my picture, my picture of the world when I was nine years old, of what diversity really could look like, because I saw the community of the staff. And then it's important for us that the kids see glimmers of themselves in our staff, that they can look at the staff and see themselves in some of us. And also, that some of them are really different than maybe somebody they've ever met. And yet they look up to them and loving them, and they're so different. You know, like, all of that's important. Yeah.
One final question. Thanks, everybody. And that is, obviously, you know, a lot of how children perceive other people in the world, and their own position in the world comes from, you know, their family, and from parenting on down. Is there any component to your program that works with the families? Obviously, we have this great action guide for families, but like, how does that go into the hands of parents? And how do they learn how to use it?
Okay, thank you for asking that. Because when I was talking about the sliding scale, what I will say is, it's not, it's not actually by child, it's by like, a set number of how many classes at the school, because when you sign up for the outdoor project, you sign up for the whole program, which means a parent training, at least one, a teacher training, assembly for the whole school, or two assemblies really, for the whole school, curriculum, like, there's a whole component, or several different components of our in-school project that are a part of it. And then you can sign on for more, too. So the hope is that we will be getting in there with the parents with each of our partner schools. I mean, not the hope, that's, that's the, the intention, the practice. The other thing we do have, and we had to stop it during the pandemic, but I'm hoping we'll be able to start it up again, is we have family camp. And that's been magical. And usually, the way that happens is it's kids who are really feeling it, who just like, really want their family to come with them. You know, we hear that a lot from kids of like, this is my home, but homes too, and I want to stay here, but I want to go say hi to my parents. But can I bring them here? And yeah, you can. You know, so right now, we've just been doing one weekend a year, or before the pandemic, we were doing one weekend a year. But our hope is, I really would like to expand on that. That's one reason we need our own site, because we don't get access to the camp that much. But I, it's a really powerful program when, and the kids who are the alumni are teaching their families, you know? And then we mix the families up. It's beautiful. Yeah.
Thank you both very much. Such great information.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Vice President Kuziak, and then Gary.
Laura.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. It was really great just seeing, giving context for, for some of the strategies that you learned in the professional development. Thank you for, for demonstrating that to us. I often say about Castro Valley, I think that there's a really great story about the diversity, the profound diversity of our community. Oftentimes, folks outside of Castro Valley don't want to see or can't see because of our history, which we should also acknowledge and not be blind of. I, I'm curious to know how, when I think about the summer of 2020, like, how things have changed, like, over 23 years, or maybe the needs have changed since, and it seems like there was a profound shift in cultural beliefs.
Yeah.
And it happened very quickly. So I'm just wondering how, how, how someone like you thinks in this space and the type of things that communities need, and the conversations our youth need and our teachers.
Yeah, I so appreciate that. Such a transformation in so many ways. The four-part workshop that the first slide that Mia showed, that is a for, that was based on a template of a four-part series that developed after, you know, since the December, or December 2020, since really May 2020, right? That was something that evolved as we were getting so many requests for virtual trainings at that time, and working with schools, but also companies. And it was right in the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd. And as we were working with all these groups, it was just becoming really clear, the, the different needs, but also some very similar needs that were coming, and that helped us create like a template that then we were able to use. And we changed our language, that whole, the way we really delve into acts of exclusion now, instead of microaggressions, that kind of came up through that period. And just with our experience, seeing the word microaggression not work for a lot of people, you know, like, so a lot of things like that evolved. To, we see a lot of, I know, I think a lot of the negativity of everything that's happened, and how intolerance is on the rise, and the otherness is on the rise. And that is true, I see that. But what I've also seen through our work, in the 23 years of doing this work, I have never seen so many people being really, really willing to dig in for real and go deep on these issues as I have since May 2020. And that gives me hope. Like, adults, I'm talking adults now, really willing to go there, and the request for help, and not wanting to spurt the issues, and the openness, and being able to be open and say, I don't know, and I really want to know. Like, I have never seen that like I have in the past few years. Then on the other side, we went back to the outdoor project for the first time this fall, because, you know, there was all these questions, are we going to require vaccinations? Are we, not, is it safe? Is it not? Our schools weren't really ready to come back until the fall. So we went back for the first time this fall. And I was expecting way more homesickness. I had people asking me, how are you going to address gun violence? How are you going to discuss racial violence in this time? You know, so many things have shifted. And what I will tell you is, for the fourth and fifth graders, it felt like another session. You know, they're always evolving every year. I'd say less than homesickness than we've ever had, which is weird, but I think they're just so excited to be there. We always talk about the racial violence. That's nothing new. We've always talked about that. Our kids always bring up gun violence. I mean, they, they bring it up. They've always brought up gun violence. That's really reality for our kids, a lot of, a lot of our kids, and it always has been. So those are things we've always talked about, that they've always brought up. And so it didn't feel, it felt like a continuation rather than this, like, weird shift, you know? And that was somehow, I don't know if comforting is the right word, but just seeing the resilience of like, oh, these are fourth and fifth graders, and they've been through a lot. And they're still fourth and fifth graders, and they still need to go deep, and they still need to play and sing around the campfire and have a great time, you know? And they're so happy to be here. Yeah.
Do you want to go before Gary?
No, no.
Gary? And then Parveen, and then Dolly?
And Dolly, I'll just wrap it up.
Okay, great.
Yeah, just have a quick comment, and that is, before the holidays, I heard your talk on Zoom that you gave to the chamber at noon time. You should.
Oh, thank you for being there.
It was very impressive there, and I think most people there really liked it. And it's just as impressive tonight. So, you know, I think what you're doing, it, it just seems like the synergies are there, and it's a great fit with the work that we've been trying to do here for the last number of years. And so I think it's a fabulous partnership. So, thanks a lot for that. I mean, what else can I say? You know, I think it's great.
I feel so, yeah, so lucky, so honored, so blessed to kind of land it here with you all, amazing people. And I, I really am not just saying this, like, this is my favorite district, my favorite superintendent I have ever met, my favorite education director I've ever met. Like, it's just, it's amazing. And, and I, and your teachers really have been really inspiring to me. And I got to see them quite a bit in a really hard time, you know? And they were really just in. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Laura, for, you know, all the work you're doing on this. And it does really fit or dovetail into our district. Thank you so much. Thank you, Neil, also, for all the work that you're doing on this. I really love the idea of the, like, student camp counselors. I know for, like, the science fifth grade outdoor class that they have here, I know my daughter so looked forward to, I can't wait till I get to high school and I get to be a camp counselor. And I'm sure kids will be wanting to do that here, too, once we, you know, have a few years under our belt, and, you know, they've gone to, they've been at camp, and then they get to be camp counselors. So I always like that when that happens, to involve the high schoolers in working with the younger kids. It gives them such a sense of, a great sense of purpose as well. And then I've always wanted to really have a good definition of assertive. I love that. Strong without being mean. So clear.
We have a whole song about it, too, that breaks it down more. So we, we write music for, I don't know if that was, we write music for everything that we teach. And we have, we just released our, that silver lining of the pandemic is, we finally released our second album that we had been meaning to release forever. But the assertive song is on there, and you can just get to it through our website. And it breaks it down, I, I think, really clearly. But the assertiveness song is on there and you can just get to it through our website and it breaks it down, I, I think, really clearly, but strong without being mean. And that calm, cool, collected, confident and clear is in there. And then also there's a chant, it's your body language, what you say and how you say it. Because all of those things, and we forget how important body language and tone of voice is, right? But it's all of those things are part of it. For me, assertiveness is my favorite. I could go on. It's, to me, it's the, it's the central tool of peacemaking.
And the last thing I want to say is about the Coal Canyon site is when this comes up before the MAC or the planning department, people here who, who live in Castor Valley should call in and support it.
Yeah, I will definitely will be in touch and let you know when that's happening. We are, it's hard to know right now. We, we are moving through the county's process.
I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Renan, but I just want to say one more thing. This work is aligned with the strategic direction that we set, some really big intentionality around what we want this district to look like and feel like and be like for our community. And so just, you know, it, it really is aligned in the work that we're doing and that we've asked. So just want to appreciate that and recognize that.
And I promise to be super quick. First of all, I want to say I'm also a huge Neera Rishikesh and Parveen Amadi fan myself. They are truly amazing. But I'm also a huge fan of Mosaic Project. As a, as a parent, an Oakland parent, Jair, when he was in elementary school, looked forward to going to Mosaic Project. So she was equally excited about it and excited after they came back. And it really is impactful to have you not only as a partner, but to have you as a neighbor in Castor Valley is a really exciting prospect as well. So I'm also excited about us deepening the partnership. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you as a dad. So.
Yeah. And I just, you know, I, I won't repeat everything, but I keep thinking about the difference between this kind of outdoor camp and everything else that you see. It's not just you go for a week and you come back. It's like the whole year and moving forward. And that's why it's the outdoor part and the in-school part.
Yeah.
That really is important. The other piece is the focus on language is so critical. It's so critical. And that's why when I see kids in those environments, I have hope for the future.
Yeah.
But adults, all of us also need, I need to remember that, the cool. Anyway, thank you so much for everything you continue to do and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. I'd like to just invite you. I mean, that just reminds me of like, you want hope for the future. There, and I was reminded of it in this fall, like, we know there's nothing like being at the outdoor school, the outdoor project versus everything else. But when you're at the camp, there's nothing like it. And I was just, you know, reminded of the magic this fall, like, oh, yeah, this is why I work so hard. And they give me hope. And if you need a dose of hope, we will be back in session in Felton in the spring. And if you want to come out and take like a contingent, a board contingent field trip, would love to have you and love to host you. It is about an hour and a half away. And, but you can come stay the night. And would love to have you and it, you'll definitely, it'll give you hope. It'll give you hope. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We will now move on to item 11B, approve the personnel report.
I move that we approved the personnel report.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. The motion passes five zero. We will move on to item 11C, accept the audit report for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
As said, this is the, the last time you are going to hear about the 2122 financials. This is really the final one. It's the audit report. So we have on the line Peter Glenn, our external auditor, who will go through the report with you. Just highlight some of those things that are changes or things that you would definitely need to know about. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Glenn.
Good evening and thank you very much, members of the board.
Glenn, I feel like you're on mute. If you could check your. No, I still can't hear you.
How about now?
Try it again.
Says, says I'm not muted. Testing, one, two, three.
Your microphone's moving.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Anybody? No?
Can you check your, your volume on your computer?
Sure. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me now?
Say that again.
Anybody? Can you hear me now?
Sort of hear you. Let's, let's turn that.
Can you hear me now?
No. Wait a minute, since we get through these technical difficulties.
Can you hear me now? Testing, testing.
Yay, yes, we can. Welcome, Peter.
Okay, I mean, I don't know what I pressed there, but it seems to have worked. So I will get rolling here. Thank you for having me remotely. Appreciate that. Good evening to members of the board and cabinets and stakeholders, audience. So it's time for your annual audit presentation. This is an annual event, as you know, in January, or this is the first time, actually, I think in a few years, we've done this in January. But typically, education code requires that the audit report be completed and filed with the state and the state comptroller's office by December 15th. So that was done this year for the first time in the last couple of years, again, because of the unique circumstances. And then Ed Code requires that the board review the audit report by the January 31 meeting. So we're meeting those compliance requirements. What the audit does is it provides an independent opinion and independent audit of the financial records. And it also determines whether you're in material compliance with any of the state and federal requirements that might apply to any of the programs that, that you might be operating during the year. It also complies with generally accepted accounting principles. So the report, if you've had a chance to look through it and you're wondering about, okay, you know, certain formats or why things are reported the way they are, you can be assured that those are all, you know, generally accepted accounting principle requirements. And by some of the other authoritative bodies that, that we report to. And another thing the audit does provide also, if there's any internal control weaknesses, it helps to identify those and to communicate those to the board and to stakeholders. So what I'd like to do is just kind of explain basically what, you know, the process of our audit year over year and the kind of a timeline that took place this past year. So if I broke it down into two phases, basically, the first phase is usually occurs in the springtime. And we perform audits at individual sites. So this year we went to six sites. And that included places like Canyon Middle School, Castor Valley High School, a couple of the elementary schools, Vanoy, your Castor Valley Virtual Academy and Redwood Continuation. So all of those sites were selected. We have a requirement by the state to test at least 20% of your grade spans. So that was done there. And so we test all your attendance there. And also it's at a couple of the, if, if they're operating in ASB, which is going to be usually a middle school and a high school operation, we test those at that time as well. So that's the operation that was done there. And then during that time period, we also come, we visit the district office and we do internal control interviews, some internal control testing. And we mainly focus on the compliance areas that we can test there. Federal and state, you, I'm sure you're very well aware, there were some talking about grants earlier. A lot of those grants come with strings attached. And so we'll be, we look at those and make sure that those, those are all compliant. And especially with a lot of the, the COVID funding that has come in now, the past couple of years, that's involved quite a bit of testing. And the state audit guide is getting bigger and bigger. And so there are more, more and more compliance areas that we, that we test there. And also an entity known as the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or as we call them, GASB. Every so often, they come out with some new rules and regulations. So that will usually add to some of the areas that we look at. So this, this past year, we were looking particularly at leases and lease accounting. And this coming year, 2223, we'll be looking at software leases. So that's a new, a new GASB that you may or may not see that impact some of the financial statements. So that all kind of goes down on phase one. And then if we look at phase two of the audit, that comes at your year end. So that's when we take your unaudited actuals. So if you think back to September this last year, you approved the unaudited actuals, which was your, your fund financials. And so those were all approved by the board. And so we take those and we do a, a financial audit to make sure that those are all materially, not materially misstated, if you will. So materially correct there. And so once that's all wrapped up, we provided an audit opinion. So for the audit report this year, we provided an unmodified opinion, which means we didn't have to, you know, modify your financial statements or recommend a modification to your financial statements to meet generally accepted accounting principles, or we didn't have to, you know, recommend any adjustments so that you weren't materially misstated. So that's a good, that's a credit to the district's, you know, business services and accounting departments. And then we also issue reports on compliance for major federal programs and on compliance for major state programs. So in all those cases, we had a modified opinion, which is accounting speak for a positive or good opinion, but we don't say positive, we just say unmodified. So, so that was all a good, a good outcome there. And I think it's important to also mention that, you know, an audit is a, the goal of an audit is to make sure nothing's materially misstated. It's, it's to, it's to give reasonable assurance to the district and to stakeholders that you can have confidence in the amounts that the district is reporting. So that when you move forward and you do things like your first interim or your soon to come second interim and your budgeting, that you can have confidence that, you know, an independent entity has looked at the financial statements and agrees with, concurs with, you know, the financial status and position of the, of the district. So that was all positive there. And again, I just wanted to thank the district for their cooperation in our audit. And I'm not sure if I should move on to the bond at this time or.
We have an action first and then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very well.
We need an action. We have to do actions first. We have to do a motion in a second before we do.
I move we approve our audit.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. It looks like we have some comments. Michael.
I have a comment. It's, it's always exciting to see my day job kind of intersect with the school board. I, I live in the world of two CFR 200. So it was, it was fun seeing those references and that we got a clean bill of health. And I just want to say thank you, Susie. And to everyone in the district who supports using our resources wisely.
I'm, I'm just looking to see if there's any other for comments or, okay, I, I have one and, you know, this just speaks to when we talk about being fiscally responsible. This shows that the health of this district and how fiscally responsible we're being. So Susie and team, thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. And I just want to say, I was reading the words as they came across and it said fun financials. And I just thought that was, that was awesome. That's all I could think about throughout the presentation. So much fun. Because financials are fun to some people, but I agree. Quentin, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Vice Principal Kuziak.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. The motion passes six zero. Now we will move on to item 11D, accept the bond performance audit for the report for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And Peter, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you very much, Laura. I jumped the gun there. So the, the bond audit, measure G, was audited under the K through 12 state audit guide appendix A. So I didn't mention that in my, in my first presentation, but one of the, one of the basis for our opinions is from information for auto requirements that are in the 2122 K through 12 audit guide. So there's an appendix in there. That's appendix A. So we use that guidelines for the bond audit. And we also use proposition 39, which, you know, is really the authorization for the 55% passage bonds like measure G. So this is a financial and performance audit. So it's a little bit different than the regular audit. So it's, it's, you know, if you wanted to call it an audit on steroids, if you wanted, or but it's, it's a little more of a deep dive into the particular fund. So it's got its own materiality and its own focus. And so, you know, on this one, there were no audit adjustments to the, the dollar amounts reported in the financial statements and in that fund. And there were no audit exceptions in our test of expenditure. So one of the things we do, we test a certain number of invoices and expenditures and also any of the contracts that were up for approval in that year. And then we also test to see if there's any change orders. And if they exceed, you know, the allowable amount. So in our performance audit, we tested about 42% or 7.6 million in the bonded voices paid. And we also, you know, reviewed projects and change order limitations as well in that process. So we didn't find any, any internal control deficiencies in, in our test of, of any of those.
This is a motion.
I move that we approve the bond audit report.
Well, thanks a lot for another great report. I mean, it's really important to us to get a clean.
Was that a second? Did you second?
I'm sorry?
Did you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Gary. Now we're over discussion.
Now I've jumped again.
Now you can go ahead, Gary. We've got a second. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, I'll try not to jump the gun here. But at any rate, it's really important for us to, especially with the bond one, to have the, to continue to have the community's support and to have a neutral, objective outsider look at it is really critical to us. It helps also with the community oversight board that is another big component of making sure that we're on the straight and narrow. So thanks to you and thanks to Susie and all her team for all the hard work. So thanks to you and thanks to Susie and all her team for all the hard work. And I'll be quiet now and try to stay out of the vote.
Any other comments? Vice Principal Kuziak, Vice Principal. I express that. Did I say that twice? Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
It's a question. Um uh in thirty seconds or less, or very briefly. What, how how do you test something? So you're looking at an invoice. Oh, they paid it. Like, so what 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 does it mean to test? If you could just maybe walk us through that.
Sure. Um well, the first place we're going to start is with the the books and records of the district. So we're going to. Um, you know, examine the general ledger for for Fund Twenty One. So uh which is where all the bond funds are expended. So. We're going to select what is a representative sample of expenditures. And um, you know, usually we stratify those. So we do, we do go for things that are larger. They would be more material, but it it's not. It doesn't preclude us from testing anything smaller, but we're going to focus on those. And then we're going to request for. We do, we do ask for an invoice, an original invoice. That would be a piece of it. But a purchase order. Um a lot of times with uh bond contracts, you'll have, or bond projects, just I should say. You'll have uh, you know, larger uh progress billing type paperwork, or maybe. Billings from a construction management firm. And so, you know, we'll go through all of those documents to make sure that. Um, you know, what's what's been reported on the, on the financial statements on the general ledger agrees with what all the support. Is and and of course, also that um the uh project that is um. Being worked on, let's say the school site that's being worked on, is also something that was part of the original bond measure. So. If it's for, you know. Uh, you know, maybe the high school, say, and maybe it's for the track, or maybe it's for some, some of the athletics. Um maybe it's a aquatic center or something. I'm just throwing throwing out ideas. But we would make sure that that's in the original. Measure that was passed as well. So um. And then um. We also check for uh things, you know, to indicate that it was preapproved, that um, you know. That um the purchasing agent or director of purchasing signs off on it. Uh facilities sign off on it. Um a lot of times with uh construction in progress, um documentation, there'll be. Uh somebody from the uh the state that will come and sign off on it as well to make sure. This project has been completed and it meets, you know, specifications, things like that. So we'll look for all those kind of indications. In our performance audit. But an invoice is definitely part of it.
So so basically, do we trust the procedures that you've done? And also, do we believe the number that you have in your general ledger is backed up by certain?
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's definitely part of the uh financial piece to make sure, you know, those are. Those uh those dollar amounts can be supported.
Any other comments or questions? Quentin?
Yeah, I just have one question. You mentioned earlier that the audit looks at stuff relating to ASB. Uh just out of curiosity, what exactly are you guys looking at?
Good, good question. Um so when we visit your ASB. There are. Uh quite a few areas that we that we focus on. So um if you think of like a financial cycle. Um you're going to have your revenues. So we pull a sample of revenues. So like if you do fundraisers or things like that. Um, we're going to pull a sample of those. We're going to make sure that the cash collected can be substantiated. So we're going to look for some sort of backup where those items have been collected. Is somebody just grabbing. The cash and putting it in a box and then dropping it off at the bookkeeper's desk. Um or is there actually? Tally sheets. Um you know, are there inventory control sheets? A lot of times what will happen is. Maybe that cash will get dropped off at the ASB bookkeeper's desk and. You know, uh there, a little more assurance would be uh appreciated as far as. You know, was there a a second count of the cash? Was, were there inventory uh tickets? Were there, was there tally sheets, like I said? Um so that's just the revenue part. And then the expenditure part. We definitely take a a sample of your expenditures. We look at um the supporting documentation, which is kind of similar to what I was describing before, only of course, on a smaller scale, but. You're going to have invoices, you're going to have. Something that would indicate uh that the expenditure is a valid expenditure. Um we're going to look and see if it's allowable. So with ASB, a lot of times, there can be uh things that. Aren't allowable to spend dollars on, like, uh you know, it's. The expenditures from an ASB are supposed to be for the students, for the entire student body. So, you know, if. I'm not saying this happened at your district, but a district, let's say they used it on teacher appreciation or something, you know, maybe they wanted, you know, the teachers were doing a great job. And they wanted to give them all a special gift at the end of the year. That sounds great, but unfortunately, it's not an ASB expense. So, you know, we look out for things like that. We are um also looking for the approvals that are required. So any ASB expenditure has to have. You know, a certain level of approvals. It has to be somebody from the student um. Body. It has to be somebody from the district, you know, like the, like the principal, like the site representative. So there's actually three. Individuals that need to approve ASB expenditures. Uh we look at, we also look at the ASB uh minutes to make sure that um. The expenditures are being ratified. So there's quite a bit. In fact, there's a really good manual if you're really interested. So there's an, there's a manual that's put out by FCMAT, which is the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team. So their abbreviation is FCMAT, F C M A T. But anyway, they put out an ASB manual. And um they update it periodically, but um. I can actually send it, send one to Susie and maybe she can forward it to you. She probably already has one. You you guys probably have.
I do have it, so we. Business services.
So it's, it's um, it's got a lot of good stuff in there about controls and like, you know, what forms should look like and, you know. Uh different, different ways to just make sure that. You know, things are being spent properly. It answers a lot of questions, because I know with ASBs, there's a lot of questions. There's a bit of a gray area. And then um. Not to continue going, but I could probably continue going here. But, you know, we also, we also audit cash. You know, we look at the bank statements. We make sure. Bank reconciliations are a big, big thing. So we want to make sure those are being done lovely. So anyway, uh hopefully I didn't. Over answer or under answer that, but I hope I hit the, hit the highlights.
No, that was great. Thank you. And I can assure you that our ASB treasurer works very hard to make sure that's all good. So thank you very much.
Am I, am I talking to him?
No, 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 Quentin.
No, no, sorry. I I didn't get that. But uh, thank you.
Are there no further comments or questions? Quentin, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the motion passes six zero. Now, at this time, I will recess. To convene a board of directors meeting of the Castro Valley Financing Corporation. So I will open the annual meeting of the Castro Valley Financing Corporation.
Yes, um, thank you. So um, this is a a requirement in the bylaws for the um Castro Valley um Financing Corporation that we meet annually and. And discuss or review any um transactions that happened the last year. Um, there are no transactions. So this is, we're just following what's in the bylaws that we need to meet. And we have, we need to put it in our, you know, agenda that we did meet, even though there are no transactions. The last transaction that we did was back in twenty twenty one, when we refunded um COPs. Um as well as ba- um geo bonds. So um last year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty two. Uh we did not have any um transactions. So nothing to report.
Any comments, Amy? None? Well, given that, I will. Close the annual meeting of the Castro Valley Financing Corporation and reconvene us to the meeting of the Castro Valley Board of Education. Board member comments and reports. Quentin, is there anything else you would like to share with us tonight?
Yeah, um, just that the Jensen Ranch presentation was awesome. It was great to see. Um how elementary school has evolved since I was uh just a little elementary school student. Also, the mosaic project, seeing how it could potentially be uh in partnership with the district is awesome and great to see. Um, and uh I guess that's it. You know, I got a lot of notes about. Um the audit report too that I'll bring back to the leadership class. Uh and I'm sure they'll be really interested to see uh why we have to vote on everything and uh take minutes. So, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Quentin. Sarah.
Um, I, I, I feel like um I ha- I, I learned tonight. That, you know, we'll just keep growing with our growth mindset. And that was nice, the presentation from Jensen really. Uh it was, it was well timed for me. Let's put it that way. So it was nice to hear um that input um from uh staff and students tonight. Um looking forward to attending our MLK event on Monday. Um and I'm really excited about Mosaic. I think that the work that they've already done in our district sounds incredible. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what happens next. Um and then just finally, um for anyone listening tonight, um I want to acknowledge our kids all went back to school this week. And. Um, I want to acknowledge that for some families, this is not always easiest for our students to return to school. So I see you and um support you.
Thank you, Siri. Sarah, you know, my mouth isn't working tonight. Apologize. Growth minds. Gary. Not working yet. Thank you. Gary.
So not a lot going on in a way because of the holidays and everything. I can't say it's cold in the Midwest. Uh ROP doesn't meet this month, but uh one thing that we are looking forward to, I guess, is uh two new members. Two people have uh left the ROP board. One, the one from Hayward, I don't know, the new person from San Leandro is. Evelyn, and I forgot her last name, but she's fantastic. So looking forward to working with her. Have a couple of quick things on the Chamber of Commerce. Uh tomorrow morning, nine o'clock. Is the ribbon cutting of the chamber's new main office, which is in Ashland. And we have a small office on Redwood Road down here, but the main office is in Ashland. You're all welcome to come there if you'd like to. See the ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Really exciting, huh? Uh and uh next week on June eighteenth, I guess it's a week from today, is the chamber installation of the. New board members and the new officers for this coming year. That'll be in Cherryland Community Center. Uh it's at six to, I think it's six to seven, is that right? Or something like six to eight or some. Somewhere through there, uh open, happy to have all of you be there if you want to be there. Uh the president this year is Todd Anglin. I think you guys all know Todd. Uh the president-elect is Janela Anguiano. It's terrific. There are two vice presidents. One is Linda Foster and the other one is. Me. So it's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Dolly?
Uh, yes. Um, of course, it was the holidays, so not as uh much going on uh representing the uh board. But I did have a uh PAC meeting, uh parent advisory committee with special ed parents. Um would like to have, uh if there's anybody online, we need, uh we would like to have more special ed parents join this PAC meeting from different school sites. Uh please talk to your principal. Um and then I did have a visit to Canyon Middle School, uh met with April Long, was so wonderful. And. Then saw uh as well, a teacher I used to work with at Redwood uh Griffin Bond, who's teaching EL over there now. It seems very happy. So. Uh the Canyon Middle School visit was wonderful and a beautiful school as as always.
Thank you, Dolly. Vice President Kuziak.
Um I just wanted to acknowledge as a board, we we did pass resolution thirty two on twenty two, twenty three, declaring February twenty twenty three African American History Month. And I'm. Uh grateful that we did that as a district. Um I want to. Report out that I visited Van Noy Elementary School um right that, right before the holiday break. Uh and Miss De La Tor took me around uh to see the DLI program, uh dual language immersion program. And it was just really festive. Uh the kids were coloring things for Kwanzaa for Christmas, for for Hanukkah. And uh just quite lively being in classrooms and hearing, hearing Spanish. Um and just how excited these kids were. So it was, it's always wonderful to be in classrooms and see how they're playing out. And when you're there, kind of at the fun time of the year where things are kind of um, folks are ready to leave, i- it's also fun to see that energy. Uh I am planning on visiting Castro Valley Elementary School um to see MTSS in action. Um I'm really looking forward to that. We're going to. Stand outside and welcome folks to school, but also see that. Um and I really appreciate Affy's intention with doing that with me. And um. I just want to say to all of our trans students in our district, I see you and I care about you. Thanks.
Thank you. Superintendent Mari?
Uh a couple of things. I was going to say, um trustee Howard didn't talk about the Health Commission, the workshop you're putting together. When, or maybe when it's done, we can share that with the community.
Yeah, we don't quite have a date yet, but it'll be in mid February. It's going to be at the Cherryland Community Center. Uh it's about student mental health and how to help kids and so forth. Uh it's a consortium, not only of the Public Health Commission. But the, but uh what luck, La Clinica, La Familia, Trabercio. Um I'm hoping D Sal and um uh the Chamber Commerce is in, they have to be. And uh and Cherryland Community Association. Uh. The two school districts have seemed to be interested, San Lorenzo and Castro Valley. So it's a. Quite a team of people, I think. Uh and we're looking forward to it. We'll be uh. It is over there. Uh that's a beautiful facility. It hard runs at the county building. It's fabulous. Um I will say, I just found out today that Hards can let us have it for nothing, which is great. Thanks to Hard. And um. I was going to say one other thing there. Oh, we'll be uh live streaming it also on Facebook, at least.
Yeah, the nice thing is it's really like a resource. Yeah.
Yeah.
The one, one thing I wanted to say, um trustee Kuziak mentioned that we passed that resolution. I think. Uh we started this last year or the year before where we really want to make sure there are lots of activities that are listed on our website for our schools. So that we're not just passing a resolution, but we're doing all of the sorts of activities. So thank you for mentioning that.
And then lastly, I didn't represent the board externally, but I did meet with Parveen and we had some discussions. And I want to thank our new trustee uh. Raymond for asking the important questions, for just being open and, you know, reaching out when you need support. You know, we want to make sure you feel welcome. And that you're part of our community. And, you know, we get to lift each other up and be there to support one another. And just want to thank you.
Well, I may say, I really appreciated everybody for reaching out to me. And. The connections are already growing and magnifying in great ways. I've really enjoyed my talks with you, Parveen, and everyone who I've sat with. Uh I've talked with all of you. And it's been really, really, uh it's only been a month and it's already been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. So I'm really excited to see where it comes down the pipe.
Thank you. And then to our community members, it's, I know there's a few of you left online and we've got our, our last standing in the audience. Um just want to thank you for joining us tonight and hearing about what's going on Castro Valley Unified School District. Welcome back, parents and families and kids. We look forward to. Having a great spring, hopefully soon. I know it's winter for a little few more months. Um and um I just hope you all have a great night, a great week, and take care of each other. Good night.